...planning board meeting. I'd like to open this meeting with... We need a delegate. We need a delegate. And your delegate passed the meeting, I believe. I need one, so John, you will be a delegate this meeting. Alternate between the two of you. Start the meeting with John as our alternate caller. Please approve of the minutes of the September 19th meeting. Have you all had a chance? Motion to move, by Yoli, do you have a second? Second, on favor. I'm sorry, you were saying...
I was saying that...
She was not here. 4:01. Thank you. Old business this evening. There are agendas for everyone up there. And I just want to double check my agenda. If anyone wants them, October 30th. Please help yourself. Joe Plant? Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. Billy Plant, West Shore Drive. Let me make that correction, please. Joe? Now, 2231, 004 Mineral Extraction Application. Good evening.
How are ya?
Hanging in there. Joe, take your time.
Good evening. So basically, since the last meeting, we've added a little bit more information to the plan. Added a couple of notes. We've added note number 13, which reflects the request for one groundwater well for at least every 25 acres. I just thought it was just as simple to say that at least three would be installable with the span of the project in different areas. And then we've added note 14, which reflects our discussion about pressures on the premises. Just reflects the fact that between Memorial Day and Labor Day, no pressure will occur on site. And then the pressure would be on site for a maximum of two weeks if needed during the off-season to help clean up the pit. We have shown a slightly revised entranceway there, coming onto the road at an 90-degree angle as requested and a little bit further around the corner. That particular location, it's a 30 mile per hour zone that allows us to meet the DOT recommendations of 250-foot site distance in each direction there. And then, you know, we could extend that further if the board would allow us to trim a little bit in a hundred-foot buffer, but that's what we could get out of that location without impacting that.
Excuse me. Robin, could you please get that door closed? Thank you.
Those are the distances we could get in that general location without disturbing that hundred-foot buffer at all. And then we also show the gate set in off the road a little ways with the Knox box, as we discussed the last meeting. Other than those modifications, I think...
From the site watching our last meetings, of course, we think of other things. One of the things that has really come to our attention, and I will say this for everybody, I live on this road, so I'm extremely familiar with it. Coming in and out of the road, off of Goose Pond, onto West Shore, the road is taking a beating. It always does. It hasn't so much since we... Sounds terrible, but we have no children, literally, on a three-mile road. There are no school buses or anything like that.
Excuse me?
Yes.
There's a big super duty Ford Massachusetts truck parked behind me. I need to get to leave.
You know what color it is?
Red or white?
Blue or red?
That's me, that's the bad guy right there. He's causing trouble out there too.
That would be very... I see our road commissioner from that district is here. But there should be a line in that road and a stop sign. There is a stop sign, but there should be a line.
Are you saying like a solid yellow line or a white line?
Yellow.
Yeah, but that is absolutely nothing new. That's pretty highway policy.
We can ask the general contractors.
To make road improvements to town.
It's not a road improvement, it is just...
Our recommendation would be that he asks the road commissioner, selectmen to... And if they say no, then we ask. He was willing to, and then you guys said, yeah, no, we don't want you to touch the road. You're thinking 7,500 feet of...
7,500 feet is what we can't, you know...
A yellow.
You're talking about white.
That's why I say you have to talk with the road commissioner, because I like pink. I don't know, yellow, white, whatever is the required color that we use on things like that. But you have to talk and talk with him, and then you bring it forward to the VOS and come back to us and tell us what you found out. You can handle that.
Is your concern that people are encroaching over the noise of the edge and breaking up the side of the road there? Are you talking like center line and side line? Or are you talking about stop sign?
I'm talking about this. Center line and a line going to the stop sign.
Oh, you're saying a line across where people have to stop?
Yes, where they flow through the stop sign.
So do you want... Yeah, one of those black white lines at the end of the road. Where... In other words, it's lined up with a stop sign, so you know where to go.
Correct. Because of so many cars, as I said, moving on that road, I don't want to see people who know how to take a proper turn. It's just, you know, just shaving it all the time. And you can't really...
Other than the white line for a stop, am I also... Is there anything else you guys are looking for from me?
Well, let's see.
I hate to paint a line and then come back and you guys ask for something else. And go two more weeks.
Yeah, there is that, but I think...
But the problem is, seeing as you know, they pull that corner so tight coming off Goose Pond and they're in your lane. As your truck comes to stop at Goose Pond...
Right, so you're just trying to get us to stop? Yeah, some of them, tell me when they want it. I don't... I know you're getting it, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it on the site.
We talked about, yeah.
Not what they're trying to do, Bill. It's not necessarily used.
Exactly, correct.
They're worried about when your truck's coming out, that somebody's been cutting the corner here. Some sort of paint to...
I don't know how painted lines are going to stop anybody from cutting a corner that wants to cut the corner. I have no problem doing it, don't get me wrong, I just...
One of the things we have to do is we have to do things for public safety.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, a planning board, we have to look out for the town. We are to make sure everything is done for public safety and welfare. I don't want any of your drivers who have full load of gravel coming out. I'm assuming the load's covered and they're going to come out at a good rate of speed, like they should, and have some little Ford Escort shake that off and run right into them. And then you get the call, hey boss, I just, you know...
So you're saying this white line is going to help scare people to go around it?
We can hope, we can hope.
Yeah, that's what I... I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as you, that's all.
Yeah, we can hope, we can...
All right, I thought you were talking about a line at the center at first, but you're talking about just a stop line.
If you can do 75 feet at the center, that would be great. But again, talk to the commissioner. And you guys present to the...
You can't do this one solid line. The state of Maine, you cannot do a one-sol line. You have to have a dual line. The problem is with doing a dual line, now I know this because this is what I did for a long time and after all those classes, you have to have a dual line. And the intersection, to have him do that, to make him responsible for doing road improvement work in the town road, okay? That would involve doing... And intersection, we do, okay? Now, intersection, that's what the state would make you do, okay? Honestly, that's not, that should not be their responsibility. You're asking a private individual to make road improvement.
We're asking a private individual to go to the appropriate people and get permission to do it. That's what we're asking.
Then what happens, after you do that dual line, now you're going to have to make him do a contract to make sure that yellow line has to be maintained.
Maintained, put down.
So honestly, I, myself, as a select board member, I cannot see putting a burden on a private individual to maintain our road work.
But we need to maintain the safety on that road for the citizens that were there, and this new business is coming. So we can ask for it, and he goes upstream and he's told no. We've asked, somebody said no, that's all we care.
Okay, so if the road commissioner says no...
All right. Then you're out. Road commissioner says yes, and the selectmen say no, then you're up still.
Okay.
Then you don't need to do it. But it will really show the people to stay out of your lane, and if there is an incident, it's really going to show they were in your lane. Because usually the trucks are in the right spot. The cars aren't.
That would work for insurance purposes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but there is always the maintaining of it.
We understand that.
Usually the truck's entering signs, stuff like that from the stand back.
Yeah.
That's a good idea too. So put a truck entering sign somewhere that would be appropriate. I don't know.
About halfway down the frontage of the property here, we do show one, so any traffic coming from the...
So the truck would be coming out, taking the right. So the car coming up behind the truck would know. Truck's pulling.
They have one here. They do have one here.
Coming from that direction. And we're happy to approach the road commissioner and, you know, next to get the paint, you know...
Talk to them first. It's going to take you a 10-minute phone call. Hit it upstairs, another 10-minute phone call, and just let us know the end result. We have done our due diligence, you have done your due diligence.
Absolutely, I agree with that. I'm just, I'm hoping we can structure it that that's some sort of condition of the approval that we, since none of us sitting here have control over that outcome, and it's not part of the ordinance directly, I hope that we can make that some sort of condition and move on with the rest of the approval process.
Absolutely.
Did you put in a note about those metal pins around about 300 feet around the perimeter so that we didn't overextend the size of the pit itself?
You're talking about, you and I discussed on site...
Just to keep that shoreline buffer line defined.
Yeah, that's something Billy and I had discussed. We didn't quite decide that how we're going to do it, whether it's going to be capped iron rods or little signs. More or less with something for his protection. I don't mind putting on the record that we will install some sort of metal object, but we're not sure what that is going to be yet.
Yeah, we're probably not too picky as long as it's fairly permanent. If it's a little soggy, if on a fairly heavy-duty rod, that's going to work pretty well, be more visible than a low pin.
Yep.
So if you want to put a condition on there...
That's fine, we can...
On, right on, we're completely...
Do it as a condition, I think, John, but I don't...
Just for clarification, in our ordinances, the planning board, those have to be approved to us. I said, in our zoning ordinance, the planning board, it is their purview if they want to ask for improvements for the common roads. Years ago, when Pepins put their place in, they did quite a bit of improvements for site and shoulder work and things like that. So I just want to be clear that it is under our purview to assess, you know?
And you're referring to the striping?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I have no problem doing it if you guys want it, and the road commissioner's got the final word on that.
Yep.
Did you have a note in here, no fuel stored on site? Do you recall which number that was, or...
I believe we do. Yeah, it was going to be...
I just don't see it jumping out.
Mobile tank only.
Is it under general notes?
Have to look at it, might be in the engineering documents here. I know, I thought we've seen it. I just don't know if it's lost off this last one, or...
I didn't have my magnifying glass.
I know, right?
It states that no crankcase oil will be stored.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. Joe, I think you've seen it. So you have a larger map, so if you would take a minute...
Make sure that's on there.
And make sure it's on there. We have dust control, vegetation, permanent vegetation.
About how long did you think you were going to be in there?
I'm sorry?
What was your estimate on how long you were going to...
I have no idea.
Project was going to go on for, 10, 20 years, or? You don't know?
I'd say all of 20, I would think. I mean, the material's only for ourselves, we're not selling it to the public, so...
Right.
This should last us a long time.
Do you have an estimate on how many yards are going to be taken out?
It didn't do an estimate for you guys. And I think it came up to 530,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did.
So I just said, I really have no idea how long it was, how long we'll be there.
Yeah. How many yards do you move a year about?
In Acton, the other pit, we went from the low, a low of 3,000 to a high of 7,000.
Yeah.
So we take from other places, when we're, you know, when we're in the area, we take from up here.
Yeah.
So it's...
You have multiple sites going at once.
Yeah. Depends on when, you know, as gravel dries up in other places, we take more out of here. And it depends on the economy. You know, a lot of things depend on how much you take out. Right, David?
Right.
If no one's working, you're not moving any gravel.
Joe, I found my magnifying glass, and I can still not see that on here.
This is mostly the reseating.
I know exactly what it is. I'm looking everywhere, because I know...
You have the magnifying glass.
Yeah, and I know we saw it, so, you know... So it may just be it didn't get transferred. Okay, we need that.
Okay.
Okay, please. Yoli, I know you had some questions last time.
Yeah, I think trips per day, did you say 30?
Yeah, we had 30 as our notes from the meeting on the 19th.
From zero to 30?
Yeah, maximum 30 per day.
Is that okay? That's what you said last time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you looking for a...
Well, it's like, I mean, you never know, every day's different. We may not be up there for two weeks at a time, or three weeks, and we could be in there every day for a month. It's running on your workload and what's going on.
But that maximum 30 should cover it for you, though?
I think we all thought that was a pretty good number.
Okay.
Is that something you're looking for as a note on here? Is that...
Well, I don't know if it is a note or a condition.
I just soon have it on the plan.
Yeah.
Right. We can look at it as an approval with that as a note you add to the next. Because there's only a few minor things you'll...
We're looking for.
Missed from the last one to this one.
Well, can we put 40 then? If you're making us put it on the plan, can I put 40 just to cover myself on that one day in 10 years that we might have a lot going on?
Does that mean you're going to stop the trucks at 30? You're going to go to 40? You're going to go to 40 and wait for somebody to complain?
I don't...
No, it's just a guideline, so we know how much we're really looking at this.
Fits with everybody else.
Yeah. So you're going to add no fuel stored on site? Yep, 30 trips per day max.
Oh, 40.
I think 30, we decided on 30 last meeting.
35, yeah.
It's just a record, and so we know. And the thing to remember is all pits aren't the same. You know, I mean, we can't even...
We can try to be sort of parallel.
Shoreland Zone IP signage on that.
Is that 300 feet you want to put that on the... How many feet are you going to put between the rods?
You know, it will end up being fairly close like that. I mean, 100 is going to be quite a few signs, but because these are arced shapes, we tend to put more signage than we would on straightaways. Just even the different particular pit, we were involved with an act, and it just made sense to keep things in order. So I'll, you know, I'd like the ability to stretch them up to maybe 200 if needed, but most likely it will be closer to 100 as we see fit on these arcs, because there are quite a few arcs.
So not to exceed 200?
Yeah. Yeah, that works.
Not to exceed.
Do it with a negative rather than a positive.
And I know we talked no retail sales.
Going to make you do it anyways.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if somebody drives in with a truck, are you going to be selling the material?
Say that again?
Are you going to do any retail sales on site?
No. No, we already agreed on...
We already agreed on that.
I'm not selling to the public.
So you'll add that as another condition too on the plan?
That was already in.
Yeah, that definitely is on here.
Oh, I didn't see it on there.
I didn't have it crossed off, it's...
And what was your thought about putting some trees on some of the slopes?
The end of three, Ken.
What is it?
Private use.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now, my understanding is you want to mow this.
Hide that screwdriver.
Remove those Sharpies?
We have removed all star tires.
You're going to be hanging all the slopes and the sides of the...
Yeah.
Sides of the field as well.
Whatever we reclaim will be kept mowed. Definitely, bush hogging, at least once a year, probably a couple times.
You're not willing to put any trees on any...
I don't want to. There's plenty of trees all the way around, 250 feet on one side, 100 everywhere else. I don't want to, Gavin, if I don't have to, put it that way.
Oh, I believe you.
Ken, Fire Chief was asking me some questions last night about the different things we've been doing. And there's this information, like Billy's going to put a Knox box on the gate. Does all this information go over to the Fire Chief?
The Fire Chief has to sign the form for them to send it in, because there's a special key just for Acton that they'll have to open that, so they'll key that for them. So they'll work with them on that.
So Billy works with the Fire, Joe with the Fire Department on that? He was asking me last night about it.
Yeah, you have to give them access.
I know there's something there, but I wasn't clear on exactly.
Do we have something about signage to keep ATVs off areas being reclaimed?
Yeah, that was note... That fit right on there. Yeah, note 12, I added that. Measures will be taken to eliminate disturbance of reclaimed areas, which may include signage to prohibit ATVs and other motorized vehicles.
Yeah, note number 12, you guys see it's here?
Does the road commissioner need to sign off on this?
It's in May, but other than that...
Just the Fire Chief.
Take May out. On the Knox box, yeah.
That's your only involvement with something like this.
Yeah, we probably could have updated the newer Fire Chief, because the old one was, when we've been dealing with this so long, it was the prior, might have even been the prior road commissioner, too.
Yes.
It's just been going through the process for a while. The other thing would be an escrow, a reclamation escrow. We've usually done, you're having five acres open, so it's been $1,000 in escrow per acre, so 5,000. Which isn't going to cover anything if it's not reclaimed, but...
But we want you to know we're here.
Now you want me to give you 5,000?
That is typical.
That is typical, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Just $1,000 an acre to pay for seed, and hopefully you'll stop the loom on site. We wouldn't have to buy that.
I'm not taking any loom off, I'm not taking any loom off site.
But the feeling is that if you walk away from it...
So when do you want the money? Is that something I got to give you 5 grand upfront that I'll never see for the next 40 years?
It'll be your great-great-grandkids, get it back.
Basically, I'm...
Work pretty fast.
Put it in your will.
Right, don't have them forget about it. Make sure you tell someone about it.
I'm going to forget about it the minute I give it to you.
You got 5,000 to gain you guys' interest for a while.
Oh, lots of interest right now.
How about you take the 5,000 and put it to the paint on the road?
You may not have to do that.
Little bit of humor.
We may not have to do that. Oh, yes.
Can we add a note about the topsoil or the loom staying on site?
I saw that on...
It's here.
Oh, I didn't see it.
We talked about that from the...
We talked about it, it's here. It usually stays right there. Because that's how he's going to regain his money. He's just going to take that topsoil and lay it out, and it's going to start falling for him.
What did you have for additional notes, Joe? Sorry, I'm just reading, trying to... Oh, there you go, note 10C is the note that... No loom coming off site.
Okay, thank you.
What do you have, Joe? Anything?
Just the ones, so we've...
Um, just the ones, so, we've got the 14 on the plan, the two, the two new ones are tonight, where the groundwater monitoring wells and the crusher note. And then, um, what we've spoke of tonight is, um, you know, a note just emphasizing the fact that we're going to, to delineate the resource protection line on the ground.
Okay, good, yeah.
We've talked about a note with no, uh, no fuel to be stored on site.
And no, please don't spill any fuel on site. You're not going to store any on site, correct?
Correct.
We have talked about doing the fueling pad, too, for the other ones.
We, we did mention about the fueling pad, and I think I saw something. The trucks have the fueling pads in them, don't they?
I'm going to make that, back in the day, you guys made Turcot do that.
Yep.
Then after you guys made Turcot do it, DEP came in, made him fill it in. So, you know, fill in all the pads and stuff, so do...
He put a drain in the center of it, or something like that.
Which was a pass at the time.
Yeah.
So, problem with the fueling pad is if, you know, you've got a crusher unit, stuff like that, you've got a mobile unit to have everything driven out to that pad when that...
Turcot at the time proposed a mobile refueling pad that they dragged around, and realistically, nobody's going to use it.
No.
So I think just straight from the vehicle to the equipment.
Exactly.
That's, that's all we're talking about.
Especially the more and more fuel cost.
I just, I know about fueling pad out there, it was, it'd be a waste of time, a lot of money.
It's going to be a building someday on top of it, turn it into a foundation.
That wasn't our design, though.
Yeah, that was theirs, the engineers.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
And then, and then, and then in the sign note, as we just discussed, the separation between signs would not be greater than 200 feet. And then we added a note about the, um, expected maximum trips per day being 30.
Joe, did you talk to, uh, 13th Street about putting some trucks entering signs up? Remember, we just talked briefly about that before.
Yeah, next one.
Next one. Yeah, we're almost there, Dennis.
We'll get, we'll get Billy, we'll get Billy out of here first.
Oh, that's the next agenda?
Yeah, that's the next agenda, yeah. Yeah, we don't need Billy to...
You're reaching the part we're driving.
But you're here. Robin, don't leave till, till Billy does.
He's halfway to the AED.
Good.
Am I close to final approval, may I ask?
I would say just those conditions and...
Do that. You get to see us.
We say in two weeks, I can...
You got to see us again in two weeks, and we move forward.
As long as I don't pull any stumps, can I cut trees between now and then?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
That would be his purview, thank goodness.
I won't bring any equipment in then to pull any stumps or anything, but I'd like to at least get, start getting cut. Running out of time, fast.
You know, when, when we left after the site walk, and we went on and did other, and came back as I'm driving home, there were at least in that one open area, just when you go in, where it's open now, a dozen turkeys. You could start a side business.
Start a turkey farm.
There you go.
They're going to love that field.
They need a field.
They're going to love the field!
Different permit. Yeah, that's true. Let's not go into any of those discussions.
Okay, let's say we'll see you in two weeks. See you in two weeks?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Any other questions before we let them go?
How was mine?
17.
Fly.
Joe, you make those changes and send me a copy?
Absolutely.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
As soon as you can.
I got them on it for you.
Thank you, guys. Smile, Seth?
Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
You, too.
Bye, Joe.
All yours, honey.
Not yet. Not yet. Next on our agenda is York County Agricultural Association, 13th Street, map 241, lot 003. Wait a minute, this is just...
They almost be at the fair. Nobody with you tonight?
Well, yeah, no, partly tonight, um, you know, I wasn't here last week, and a big thing on our end, that I had hoped to accomplish before this meeting was getting the test pit that the engineer would like to see in the drainage structure over here, just to make sure the draining, that all the drainage on this makes it works. You know, he's quite sure going and looking at the soils himself, but he kind of wants that certification from the soil scientist, and I wasn't able to coordinate that between last meeting and this one, given the fact that was gone all last week. So, yeah, um, we're not quite as prepared on this one as the last one to, to kind of near the end discussion. We really like to have Craig's final, final okay on, on that drainage. We don't anticipate any changes, but the engineer did want to see that test pit before he was going to, you know, issue a construction version of this set of plans.
I think we'd all want to see that.
So we're working on that. I did do, um, you know, the rough calculation Ken and I had discussed on, you know, my, my rough approximation of, you know, on a max, max event, like the, like the fair, how many people were parking on the side of the road. I had, I had, you know, given up and down 109 and a little bit of Milton Mills Road there. I had it at, you know, probably just, just maybe, just over 6,000 feet or so of stretch that people were parking, which would be probably just over 300 cars. So I think we were trying to come up with an approximation for that number to use it, to, to create some sort of trigger as to when we would start to force people to use this, and, and then have, work with the OT to put up signage preventing. So at this point in time, you know, based on what I've looked at on the aerial photos, I'm, I'm thinking around 300 or maybe a little bit less than that, you know, somewhere in the 250, 300 range, depending on how the board feels about that, would be a good, a good spot. Once that many spaces are available, we start to, uh, you know, and first, we'll just encourage voluntary use of it, but I think we hit that number, we start to more force use of it for safety reasons, if nothing else. Um, so I guess I'm throwing that out there.
Even before you started voluntary using, we'd want the paved entrance and streetlight crosswalk, things like that, too, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
Which makes sense, I think that's what...
Soon as you start getting more than a handful, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Joe, just to be clear, I understand what you were saying now, when you said that's the next one.
Yeah.
Talking about 13th Street.
Yeah.
I'm a little slow tonight.
It's all right. So at this point, yeah, the next version of this, once I get the, the thumbs up from Craig on these, these drainage structures, you know, I've been, we've got a little more detail about the crosswalk and entrance signs, we'll show, you know, approximate location of a, of a ticket gate on the other side of the road. We will have a, a note on the plan stating that, um, you know, during the larger events, that the fairgrounds must provide parking attendants to help, you know, create...
Crosswalk darts.
Right, and, and attendants just to make sure there's order in the, in the parking situation over there. And then we also did discuss, I have a note about, um, you know, any, any larger events like that, too, that they'll be required to bring in some, some portable lights for people to be able to see in the parking lot, both, you know, personal safety and, you know, a variety of different safety reasons, I guess.
Now, we had talked about the, um, the ground, what we, uh, gravel, packed dirt. Any more on that that you'd like to?
Um, as far as, are you looking for some sort of, you know, exact specification of what that's going to be on the top of it, or...
Not at this moment, but I want to know what direction you're going in.
We just want to get on the plan, that the parking lot's going to be grass, much like the fairgrounds itself.
Right, yes, that's, yeah, as we stated at the last meeting, I get where you're getting at now, yeah.
Like the one on the other side that you...
That would be the, the goal, is to have, um, you know, vegetated area here, not, um, you know, open gravel, much like the other side of the fairgrounds. So that, you know, it's more of a grass surface that's used two, three times a season during larger events for...
Isn't that, isn't that against our own ordinance on parking lots? We have specs on how parking lots are supposed to be.
I think you do, Dennis, but I think a lot of that, um, you know, the fairground, even in, you know, DEP's eyes and everybody's eyes, fairgrounds, agricultural grounds comes under slightly different standards. So, you know, I'm not trying to speak to, if you want to try to look it up, that's fine, but I think even as far as the engineers looking at it, if this was any other sort of commercial parking lot, commercial operation, we'd have to build it much differently.
You, you are right.
Because of the agricultural, they kind of get an exemption in a lot of those things, to be able to...
But just for conversation's sake, going where Dennis is going, you have to know that all it's going to take is a little bit of rain. You're going to have puddles, you're going to have all kinds of things that will, you know, need attention before they become swimming pools, you know?
Well, I mean, part of...
Just kind of keeping things in a, maintained in a... We'd look up that agricultural thing, but so you keep it maintained in a good orderly fashion.
Yeah, no, I agree completely, and that's, that's a big part of the reason why we've got Sebagotec involved with this.
Because you're doing, you're doing so much for safety. You don't want, you know, somebody's mother or grandmother to twist her ankle walking into the, you know, fair after they've parked or whatever, just...
No, absolutely, um, you know, Craig, Craig shows nice, even, flat slopes in his design, which are, which are very important to actually channel the, the stormwater runoff to the two drainage structures that he has, so, uh, uh, he's, you know, we're anticipating, you know, a very flat slope surface, and, um, you know, again, assuming Caleb is going to do this work, who was here at the last meeting, he, he very much in this type of situation reaches out to me more than most contractors, just to make sure he's getting everything right, and that, uh, and, uh, he's already asked, you know, and again, he's already asked me to, to show him where the toes of these slopes are that need to be adjusted up here on the west, the westerly end of things, and, uh, we'll be doing a lot of onsite layout work to help assure he, his final grade matches Craig's, Craig's design here.
I had a note from the public hearing that Phase 2 would be implemented once 200 sites roughly were available, as far as the crosswalk and the paved entrance and the lighting.
Yep, that, that works for us.
That works for you?
That works, good.
I don't think the emergency exit would really be feasible, really, until that Phase 2 was actually dug out. It'd be small enough that hopefully it's not needed.
Right, yeah, because just...
We have the inflow and outflow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your two entrances are already small enough. I think we'd be okay with that. Uh, is there a no camping note on your plan?
Um, not on this version, but on the next one you'll get.
On the final?
You did, yeah, yeah, no, we did cover that.
Are we viewing this as two conditional uses or one?
We kind of talked with the Phase 1, Phase 2, it's, it's a gravel extraction to create a parking area.
Yeah.
Uh, and originally was also talked as a campground, too. We pulled the campground element out of it, and it's just gravel pit to parking area.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, do we want to get a set of plans that would be just for the mineral extraction, and then one that would be for the parking water we find, with just a compiled version, kind of like we're working with now?
Yeah, I think I'm okay with the plans we have.
I think this is telling us what we need.
It's got our depth to where we're going, the slopes, the stormwater ponds, and a parking plan. The loom will stay on site, and hopefully it's enough to, um, revegetate that base area.
And the whole back slope of the thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it has that all in here.
It's just whether the traveled path is, will be gravel, or they'll loom the whole thing, and hopefully it's all just field. And of course, the fairgrounds say it's only three times a year, but it's being used more and more. I mean, when we were there for the site walk, there was a fence there, too, as well, so hopefully it's utilized a lot more.
Yep.
And things are still going well with the 13th Street Association.
Yep, as, as far as I know, I haven't, um, spoken to any of them directly since, since the site walk. I know Roger has been in touch with them quite a bit, and I did, um, you know, I did send some, some information to many of the members, many of the members of the board, inviting them to that last public hearing.
Right.
I'm not sure we saw many of them.
That was excellent, that's excellent. Really good, excellent. All right. Any questions? Any further?
No, I think I'm good.
Yeah?
I know 13th Street was looking for a detail for the gate and stuff like that, but I think you discussed it well enough.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not sure what that looks like. I know Roger, like he said at the last meeting, got some, got some fencing and some gates from the airport.
That's right.
And I know they're excited about them, and I, you know, I assume they're professional looking, and I could try to get photographs or something if it would help, but I'm, I'm actually not familiar with what they...
I think they're excited because they were free, probably.
Partly, yeah.
Likely. Excellent.
Joe, would you be willing to talk to the, uh, fairgrounds about putting some other types of vegetation on this back hillside other than just grass, maybe some bushes, or not necessarily giant trees that are going to fall in the parking lot, but maybe some bushes and things that would, uh, help break it up? I noticed you've got this riprap swale here, and it would be good to have something other than grass around that thing.
Yeah, no, and I, you know, I...
Look nicer, too, I think.
I don't want to speak for them on this one without talking to them first, but I, um...
I'd like to get the idea out there.
And I, you know, I do intend on inviting them to the next meeting when I have that more complete plan for us to hopefully do more of a final review on, but, um, you know, in this instance, I think, you know, if nothing else aesthetically, and, you know, it might limit their maintenance, you know, it's a little bit different situation. If they were, if they had that vegetated well enough where they didn't have to try to mow it or anything like that, I think it would save them a lot of work, so, that did make sense to me.
I think there are probably things there already.
Well, this slope right here is not, not even existing.
No, I know, but there are things on the property right now that can be, you know, as they're taking a layer out, it can be set aside, and...
Right, well, certainly, yeah. I'm not picking what type of woody vegetation it is.
No, it's some sort of woody vegetation it would be.
Yep. No, absolutely. I will try to discuss that with them before the next meeting, and then you'll be able to hear the results of that, hopefully firsthand with those guys.
Good.
So I'll put you guys on for next week.
Next week?
Yep.
Are we okay with no escrow out there? I'm good with that.
I... We're talking about...
We should talk about that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it goes, you know, with the other mineral extraction sites, we do ask for that, pretty much standard, so we wouldn't want to make an exception, and it's the same kind of thing. We don't want to have an eyesore with sand blowing around out there that we could be dealing with if we had a little bit of seed money, so...
I'm, I'm not, I don't disagree or agree with you at that. I think where this is going to a Phase 2, it's a Phase 2 problem, or a project, that they're not going to have, they're not going to reclaim and have a parking area and have something that's going to slide down on them and not take care of it. They're going to do what needs to be done properly, and if that means putting some woody vegetation up, they're going to do it.
But you say that, but it's, Mr. Plant, he, he doesn't want, he's going to do the same thing, but you're making him do a, do a fuck up.
Mr. Plant's not putting in a parking lot.
Yeah, but it's, same, it's no different. I mean, it's same on an eyesore. He's not going to want to make an eyesore either, you're assuming that he, you know...
Well, I didn't say it was an eyesore either, but, um, we can, we can ask for some money. I'm sure from York County, we can get something.
Yeah, and I mean, again, I, that will be an easier discussion when I bring him back in here in two weeks. I will let him know it's going to be up for discussion, so if he wants to talk to, you know, any of the other board members over there, maybe propose a, a solution if, if we're going to do something different.
So, we will see you in two weeks?
Perfect.
Yes?
I appreciate it very much.
I'm very bored, please.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, very much.
It'd be nice to have the projector for some of those.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is-
A projector and a projector we need.
Yeah.
Probably did.
Hand that to-
We have some copies we can get to David?
No, just for David.
Yeah, for David.
Give these to David.
Certainly. I think everyone else got one.
Thank you.
Well, this one's good, just to have that for you. How it kind of happened, I'd hear what you're talking about.
Awesome.
Next up, Mr. Martell. Brad. Leah, sorry for being familiar with your names, but this is Martell, Youngs Ridge Road, map 217 lot 029, sketch plan application for a proposed 14-lot subdivision. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you have the checklist of the subdivision?
Yeah.
This is one here. That's an older one. Someone's got the cleaned up version.
Yes?
Yeah.
Totally do.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just wanted to make sure that what we had planned to do is acceptable. I think, you know, Brad is going to just give you an overview of the new submission, and we're here to answer any questions, but we don't, we're not expecting to make any big, long presentation unless, of course, there's questions or issues arise that you'd like us to address.
Thank you, Leah. Actually, that is in keeping right on with the sketch plan application, and that's where we are at right now. Thank you, so, please.
Yes, I'm Brad Jones, and I'm representing Arnie Martell, and on this piece of property, it's actually located at 260 Youngs Ridge Road, and we've been working on the property for quite a while. We've got a complete boundary survey that we've done on the property, and we've also done soil, high-intensity soil mapping, and done quite a bit of design. So, we submitted to the board a 14-lot conventional subdivision, and it's actually got three lots on the lake, and there's the remaining lots along a proposed road that would go back and connect on to Youngs Ridge Road. The plans also include a highway access or a driveway plan that shows the site distance, and we've got a location of that road that is a safe location for site distance. It's actually going to be a residential subdivision, and once again, there'll be 14 lots, and each one of the lots will have its own onsite septic and well and underground power, and the road itself will be a private road and remain a private road, you know, throughout. So, we did submit a full set of plans. We've got the, also, application, and then we've got the soils, so I think we've met all the requirements for the sketch plan review, so.
You have the-
Yep, so I was just going through that checklist right there.
Did you have your copy of that?
I got this, and also the subdivision regulations right here.
Yeah, well, I'm asking a little bit this one, please.
Okay.
This is what we're looking for. It's different, so.
Got to return.
Nope, you don't. It's this one, we shall be looking at the same thing.
What page are you on, Joyce?
Sketch plan application.
Sketch plan application.
Second page.
That's little.
Yeah, I was going to say it's at the top of the page. Had to say, there's not much there.
Just at the top of the page, it's little. There you go.
Tied in under the staple. It's this little one.
Leah, do you have a copy of this?
I don't.
Brad does.
Brad does.
You got to do an application.
Application.
Yeah.
Right. So, everybody has, we're all on the same page.
Looks like this. Oh, it's a five-page resume.
They said the required submissions, further documentation could be required, but that's a, this is what we're going for. And I think I'm just going to read them out to you and everybody else. The application, including the name and address of the applicant or authorized agent with complete letter of authorization, the name of the proposed development.
Check them off as we go?
Yeah, we can check them off as we go, if you'd like.
One's good.
Okay, one is good. The name of the proposed development.
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. The status is map and lot number.
Yep.
Total floor area of the proposed buildings.
It's got building envelopes.
Building envelopes, okay. So, are we going to go with that, because each of these may be different?
I'll just circle that one out, and we'll get that on the revision.
Sure.
Okay.
What size roughly square footage are you looking for in the buildings?
2,200, anywhere from, really, anywhere from 18, 21, 2,200 with the garage.
Including the garage. Ground coverage calculation.
So, we'll need an impervious cover calc once you, and it could be in your stormwater plan.
Yeah, we do, we did use that for our calculations for the drainage report. Did you actually want to show, like, one of the lots with a driveway in a home, like a typical?
As long as you can provide the calc's on a second piece, that works.
Okay.
And then just come up with a total percentage of impervious?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
For the whole property and for each lot, are we looking for?
I would do it as the whole site.
As a whole site.
Yeah.
Yeah. On a location of each proposed building structure or addition.
We do show the setbacks for each lot, so there are building setbacks that are shown on the plans, so.
Do we have a copy of the deed or record of ownership?
Yep. Yes.
Dated, certified, permitted survey of parcel, including reference points showing true north and graphic scale, total acreage.
Yep.
Yep. At this point, those are the, with the exception of the total floor area of the proposed buildings, this is what we are at right now. And you will provide the ground coverage?
Yes.
calculation as well.
We have a form online if you want to use it, or just come up with your calc's on your own, or-
Oh, okay.
Add it onto the plan.
Either way, I'm right with you.
And Madam Chairman, if I might add, just to make sure that we've got all the i's across the t's in the cover letter for the submission back on section nine.
Yeah.
There's some additional submission criteria in section 5.3 of your subdivision regs, which those are also submitted to, and you can apply them. Just specifically, the requirements are that there's a USGS total map, and a soil survey, and a narrative, and Brad has submitted all of those as well.
Yes, I've seen the narrative.
So, then you've got the sketch plan checklist on the next page.
On the next page, everyone. Sketch plan meeting and site inspections. Sketch plan meeting procedure, the applicant presented the pre-application sketch plan application, sets a module to the board.
Yep, I've got the old application.
You have it.
And that's fine for sketch.
All right. The board made suggestions relative to the project to be incorporated into the subsequent application.
That's early on to really have that, David.
It's very early on to have that, because-
Well, that's how the book reads, so.
That's how the book, okay, because we really haven't dug into enough of that to say that. You understand that?
Yep.
Okay. Date of the onsite inspection will be scheduled. So, people?
I'm going to schedule a site walk tonight, is that what you're saying?
I think we got to get going.
Be hard to see, yeah.
Right, true.
But, yes, Ken, you have your calendar in front of you?
I don't have the calendar.
We can catch up with you tomorrow on that.
The 19th is my first Saturday available, if you're looking for a Saturday.
That's, that's actually after our meeting, after our meeting, though.
Yeah, if you're looking for Saturday, I can do Thursday, the 10th.
I can't.
So, it sunrises. You were on the last one anyways, right?
Well, it's going to be getting dark, though.
I was just checking sunset.
Yeah.
I can't do the 10th either.
You were the last one, however.
Yes, I was.
Today's sunset, 6:22.
So, I mean, if we just go-
We do a Saturday? Gavin, are you good for Saturdays now, or are you still?
I can make it work, just schedule someone else to do the market for me, because it seems to work better than trying to do in evenings. The days are getting shorter.
I mean, it's 4 o'clock. Excuse me, sir.
My name is Dick Spencer, and I represent you, Leah, and I just wanted to point out to the board that you're required to notice the site walk pursuant to Title I and allow the public to go, so you need to leave enough time.
Yes, we know, we understand. That's what we do, yeah.
Did we rule out the 19th?
Sorry?
Did we rule out the 19th?
Now, the only thing I said about the 19 is after our next meeting. It's after our next meeting. I mean, there's plenty of time. Brenda? And she's gone.
She's come back.
She's come back. Brenda does our scheduling, for those of you who are wondering why we turn our eye and ask her particular questions.
What am I doing?
What are we thinking? We're still thinking.
We're still thinking, but with a site walk.
Like we say, in sunset, 6:15, probably about the time we get to that. I mean, I can do the 15th, which is a Tuesday.
What time are you thinking?
Um, I was thinking 5 o'clock for everyone that-
Could be there.
Needed to be there, but if the people that couldn't make it at 5, then-
Well, I mean, just putting this out on the table, like everybody knows, we have been there. We don't know what you're doing now, but we have been there.
Really, haven't changed.
So, if we, if we went on the 15th, do you know in your schedule?
At the 15th, I can do.
You can do?
Yeah.
You can do. Can you work-
It's Tuesday, the 15th.
Tuesday, the 15th.
I think I could make that happen.
Even 4:30, depending.
I think it probably wouldn't work for you, right?
I could do 5:30 on the Tuesday.
Sorry?
5:30 would work?
Yeah.
We'll still be there.
We'll still be there.
If you met us there. We start at 5, and you can meet us there.
Just meet us there.
You just make me run.
Yeah. Drive right down this time, don't run.
Yeah, drive, drive down.
Does that work for you guys?
Yes.
15 would work?
Yes.
That gives you plenty of time for posting, Brenda.
Not plenty, but I can do it.
But she can do it.
I can do it.
It would be 5 o'clock.
4:30 Town Hall?
Um, yeah. Yeah, 4:30 Town Hall, or as soon as you can safely arrive at the site. Yeah. For Yoli. Yes.
Stick with it.
We are there. I would just like to look under sketch plan review in our book. I just want to make sure something. Do you have yours on top? Mine is behind us, it's 5.2. I just don't like going to go with these things behind us.
Says for existing use of land, you have, on the top of the second page right here, you have woodlot and farmland. Is that just kind of the use, or is that your tax bracket, sort of speak?
That's just a description of the-
Just a description of how it looks, sort of, yeah, okay.
Excuse me while I'm just checking this one out.
And you do have a different stormwater management area denoted on this new design, the one that's right here.
Yes, that's a-
Can you tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, so we actually have two detention ponds designed for the system right now, so that lower pond takes care of all the drainage for the hammerhead, for the lower end of that road. The bigger pond takes the upper portion of that road, and everything drains back into that, so. So, we did move that pond, we relocated that from the plan we had before, and it's, we moved it to the other side of the road, which is closer to the proximity of the way the drainage flows in there, so.
Is that new location close to where the temporary construction pond is?
It is.
Yeah.
Yep, very close to that, yep, which works well, yep.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's caught along.
Okay, so to continue on. 5.3 sketch plan submissions. Nine copies of the sketch plan and supporting material have been submitted 10 days prior to the planning board meeting.
Yep.
Yep, it was 14 days ago. Layout of streets, lots, buildings, and other features in relation to the existing conditions. Layout of streets, lots, buildings, and other features in relation to the existing conditions.
Got the Hams and Buzzell and Youngs.
Yeah. That would be on... Feel free to jump in on those.
Sure. Yeah, the plan does show Buzzell Road and also Youngs Ridge Road.
On A1? Are you on A1?
Um, that's, I'm looking, probably the first plan, the overview plan shows that.
The overview?
Yep. So if you go to that second sheet, that's probably the best gives you overview.
Yes, very good, okay. So that's, uh, yes.
Well, how about the buildings? Are they on there, too?
We'll get to that, actually, in this.
Well, that's part of that.
They, they are shown on the...
That's part of the one you just read, Joyce.
Yeah, but I think that's A2, on the buildings.
Um, they are shown on the overall plan in, on A1.
It's the overall plan on A1. What about...
Just the setbacks.
Yeah, so A1 does show the buildings.
It, it shows the existing buildings. Is this, I assume this is meant the proposed buildings.
Yeah, so we need to add, normally we wouldn't put that on the A1, probably put that on the grading and drainage. We can show a, a detail of, you know, how each lot's gonna set up with the driveway, with the house, you know, so we can get an idea of what impervious and where the house sizes, that type of thing.
Braining, I'm looking at grading and drainage.
Well, that's not on this plan now, but we, we will add that, so.
You will add that, okay. Site conditions, such as deep slopes, wet areas, vegetative cover.
Yeah, so we do have, on the grading and drainage, it's got contours and, and it, I believe it's shaded, it's a little hard to see, it shows the slopes over, over 25%. On C1? C1 and C2, yeah.
C1 and C2, yeah.
C3. C3, yeah.
Okay, and we've determined, we do have the written project narrative, correct?
Yes, that was submitted with the application.
The existing conditions of the site, the full description of the proposed development, how common areas and infrastructure will be managed and maintained.
Yes. Yes, yep. There's no common areas in this one? Uh, no, this is all, all 14 lots encompass the entire 73-acre property. So that would be in A? Yep.
Doesn't mean roads, though?
No. Could, but I don't, but it's still on A.
How the road would be maintained and managed?
Yeah, so you'd be looking for the, eventually, like we talked in the prior, was the association documents and the roads.
We're gonna want a, a maintenance plan for the stormwater detention areas.
All right, well, yeah.
That would be something we'll need in the future, I mean, I...
That's down for the preliminary plan, yeah?
When we get to the preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, it's under this heading, sort of speak, but it's not...
Yeah, but this is still a sketch plan, and we will get to that one right over here, yeah, yeah.
But it's looking for general, a general direction, right? General proposal?
No.
Well, you're talking eventually Home Monsters Association, right?
We got the last one.
Yeah, the private road association. So those are two of the ways.
Those will come through down the road, okay. We're gonna continue. A sketch plan application form and a sketch plan application fee. I say bad words sometimes, Mr. Martel. Ken?
Which one are you on? Did you skip the USGS?
Yeah.
Yep, we got the general, the old application he used for that. We'll switch to the preliminary app when he moves on for that.
Now we're talking about a fee.
Yeah, we're all set with that one.
We're all set. A copy of a portion of the USGS topographical map of the area, unless the proposed subdivision is less than 10 acres. Have a copy of the map.
Yeah, that's included in the application, yeah.
A copy of that portion of your county's aerial survey covering the proposed subdivision.
And that's actually included, too. It's, we've actually done a high-intensity soil survey, yeah.
Okay, 5.4 contour interval and onsite inspections. Within 30 days of the sketch plan meeting and onsite inspection has been scheduled.
Yeah.
Yes. The applicant has been informed in writing of the required contour levels of the preliminary plan. How's that gone out?
We're working off the old ones anyways.
Okay.
What's your contour lines on these? Uh, they're every two feet, two-foot contours, yeah.
Okay. So we're good with that from the old one?
Send him a letter.
Yeah, we'll get a letter out.
We'll send you an email.
Logging has been placed at the center line of the proposed streets and at the approximate intersection of the street center line and corner lots.
Uh, yeah, we have staked out the lots, so we can show you that during the site walk.
The road's different, will be different now.
The road, the road hasn't moved at all, yeah.
I meant down the end, for the...
The Hammerhead.
The Hammerhead.
The three lots that are on the water.
Yeah, the Hammerhead's in the same location.
Okay.
So it's, the configuration of the lot lines have changed based on the other plan, the other layout we had. Is the Hammerhead all flagged? The perimeter, if not, just have it for the... Well, we can flag that, yeah, it is not.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't mind doing this, but certain people have to show up. I staked out that subdivision spent $5,000.
I'll be there.
I must say, you don't say hello to people, but I just, now I pull them out.
We'll be there.
Okay, yeah.
We'll make sure. Building footprints shall be flagged. I, at this point...
Early for that, isn't it? Yeah.
The lots themselves, maybe, at least where they're along the road?
Once again, I mean, I'll do it if certain people like yourself show up. I spent a lot of money doing it, and for you, I did it for, and I'll do it again now that the plan's changed, but I'm not gonna do it if you're not gonna show up, so.
Well, you do it for the process, too, I mean...
Yeah, well, no, I'm not building this, I'm not building the subdivision, so I'm not just gonna throw away 20, 30 million, uh, 20, $30,000 laying out locations of lots. I mean, I don't mind doing it one more time, but you asked for it last time, and I did it, it was a waste of money. And now the stakes, I pulled them out, you know what I mean? Because now the plan's changed, so...
You didn't waste it for us.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't, but I just get frustrated if someone asks me, so.
Yeah, okay.
I don't mind doing it.
And we will, and...
I just will do it, the lot corners along the edge of the road, you know? But there's no intention of staking out house lots.
Right.
There ain't gonna be any house adult in that subdivision for quite a few more years, okay? So I'm not gonna do that, I'll do the corners one more time.
The building lots.
Yep.
Yeah, the building lots.
Minutes shall be...
And minutes will be taken, we'll take notes there.
Yep, great.
And...
We'll have a minute taker with us.
Yes, we'll have our minute taker with us.
And we can go through during the site walk where the houses are gonna get built and...
Right, it'd be...
And show you all, you know, because we can, we can access each one.
And I know at this point, that's, it's on here, and that can be an approximation. I mean, we're, we're quite a ways away from that at this point.
Sure.
Okay. So the...
That was it.
That was it on the sketch plan, okay. What I, I want to say is, this will be publicized. We will ask people, I will ask people to show up, and there'll be a lot of walking, I'm gonna say, is gonna, gonna be walking. So they have to be respectful of the property, and just to be prepared for that. And is the public meeting open to everybody? This does not mean that a butters get letters on this, that is not, at this point, what happens. But Julia knows that this is a public meeting, and they are more than welcome to be there, more than welcome, so, yes.
Where is, what do you want everybody to meet? Right at, right at the entrance there, where my house is?
It's such a big site.
It's such a big site, that's a good, good point.
Right.
Good point. It is such a big point, and I would respectfully ask, again, that people wait for the planning board, perhaps in the driveway that goes no further than your house.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, and I welcome everybody like I always have, so...
Yeah.
I mean, whenever they show up, they show up an hour before or something, I'll be there to greet everybody, so...
Yeah.
They really want to wait for you guys, if you don't mind, so it doesn't matter.
I do want, they should wait for us, and you know the time, we're gonna be there, 5 o'clock, give or take a few minutes, and meet, you know, just be, is, is that pile of loam still at your, on your property?
Yes.
Lovely big pot of loam before you get to Mr. Martel's house.
Yeah.
I would...
Meet at the flagpole.
I would, I will sincerely ask people not to go any further than that until we are all together. And please tell your neighbors, Mr. Martel has always welcomed people at these things, and as a planning board, we do, too, so if you're coming, that's, that's the time and the meeting place, and we will continue from there, together, so we all have the same information at the same time. Yes.
I'd just like to very briefly, in one-minute statement, which has the site meeting, will be asking you to look at the slope of the road. Don't think the road can go where it's located here, and also at the Hammerhead, which I don't think meets the required requirements.
Well, then, if you have those questions there, ask them there. We welcome that. Thank you. And there was one other. Please know, we do not take discussion at these meetings, but because of what has gone before this, and what I assume may go after this, I'm trying to allow some back and forth. Mr. Martel wants to know where you're coming from, this board wants to know where you're coming from, so please remember that in your overview of what's going on.
The other thing we'd ask...
There's one lady who, I was gonna go to, I will come back to you, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, will it be publicized on the town site, the meeting and the time, or is it just in this room that it's being announced?
No, Brenda.
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
And then we put notices around, and it's on the cable channel.
It's on the cable channel. It's on the website, and it is put in this building. We put it up here on this bulletin board, or is it downstairs in lane?
It's this bulletin board out here, window downstairs.
Bulletin board out here, so we do that.
Should be in the minutes, too, right? Should be in the minutes of the meeting as well.
Well, afterwards, but she wants, the meeting of the minutes will be after the site, so that doesn't do anybody any good, so, yes, sir.
I just also wanted to go on the record, saying that as Julia looks at this plan, Lot 7, which is the 48th lot with limited access on the, on the lake, still looks like a funnel development to us that doesn't meet the descriptions.
I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, would you...
Dick Spencer.
Mr. Spencer, I've just come back from a two-day meeting with the Maine Municipal Association. Planners from around the state were there, from the state level, from everything, and one of the questions I asked at a meeting was if anybody could give me a definition of a funnel subdivision from the state level down. They'd never even heard of it. So I'm not taking exception, and I understand when you say funnel, what you mean, but there is no funnel subdivision, so...
But ordinance provisions...
It does not say funnel.
It doesn't say that word.
That's right, and all we can go by is the written word.
By a grant toward a lot, which is a lot being used for access to the lake by multiple other lots.
But we don't know that that's gonna happen at this point.
I'm just saying, if you look at the plan...
I see the plan, and I see what you're saying, and I really am gonna end the discussion on this, 'cause we don't know, we haven't gone through the whole thing. We're not, we're not gonna do it, but I appreciate you bringing it forward, but I thought it would be important that you know, that there were two of us for this board that spent, we got back from Bangor at 6:30 tonight to make this meeting, and that was something that we actually went to particular workshops on, to ask state people about, so, you know, we're taking it all seriously.
In one sentence, I've worked on Maine lake protection for 40 years, and Peter Lowell at Lakes Environmental in Bridgestone has been working, we've been working on regulations to prevent what we've always called funnel development, and you have that provision, so it's, it's a concept that's very well understood by people who work on lake protection. It's not a term that's written into the ordinances, but it's a well-understood concept.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I thank you for sharing that with us. Thank you very much. Is there anything else on any side?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we submit these plans to Southern Maine Regional for their input.
I don't think we need to.
I don't think we need to at this point, at this, at the sketch plan, we don't need to do that.
You would wait until we have to make further versions and then have Southern Maine review it?
I don't, I just don't believe we need to do it at this point, so, I see you back there, yes?
Yeah, just one question. So the three lots on the lake are, is, are we saying that these are the only lots that will have lake access, or do we not...
I'm not saying anything at this point, because, because I don't know what the plans are. I'm not saying anything.
Okay, so that's not something that gets discussed at the sketch plan, that comes later?
It's not a public hearing. That will be discussed at a public hearing, so, no, that's where we are. We're trying to take this one step at a time, sketch plan, we'll go to preliminary plan, we'll go to, and, you know, yeah, we probably gonna cut down a lot of trees, making copies of this, and it is part of the process, but again, thank you for bringing that up. Anything else on this? We shall see you on the 15.
Thanks for your time, yep. Have a good night. You, too. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Harper, Harper Road LLC, 189 Harper Road.
I am gonna ask for that again, because this stormwater intervention is in the shoreline zone, and I've been looking at a lot of different options.
I know.
Isn't this the one you just said?
No, no, this is in the shoreline, no, he's part of the subdivision. No, but I, this is something I want Southern Maine to review, because I'm not sure, this elk was only off of the lake, so I'd just like to have Southern Maine review that, and I will ask that again.
No, yeah, please do, please do.
Oh, thank you.
It's always ominous when you see...
Oh, just duck.
Like snow storage.
It's always ominous when you see like snow storage.
We need all that. Maybe we-
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing tonight?
Very good, yourself?
So you sure knew when to come on the schedule, don't you? Whoever just said that. Finally leave the ring. It was nails on a chalkboard, wasn't it?
Yeah, thank you for seeing us again tonight, Madam Chairwoman.
We're becoming fast friends.
Fast friends, that's right.
He only wanted to see you every two weeks.
All right. So we made the changes that you suggested.
Yes.
We just wanted to go over those with you and-
Dated, the sheets dated October 3rd. So that would be the site plan signage and driveway. That's page three. And then page five. And the last one is the, the page seven is the driveway entrance. We mentioned at the last meeting that we would bring the diagram of the driveway. So that's page seven. The plan was originally RPE, watered measurements for the poles. The other change is note four, this is back, sorry, I jumped to the easy one, the power pole measurements, site plan. But note four says that based on the last discussion we had, that we would put a sign at the entrance on the right of way, right before our property, but at another fork with our neighbor, Mr. Myers, where his driveway tees off. So we would put a sign to make it really clear, keep on coming up, don't turn left. So that's why that sign is there on our property.
That's that why in the driveway when you came up for the sidewalk.
So that sign, we didn't, you know, on your, on your advice, we thought that it wouldn't be lit just to not be in anyone's eyesight at their house. And no one would be coming after dark anyway to the property, only exiting. So, but we're open to guidance if you think it should be lit.
Well, watch your December and January weddings. I mean, seriously, you ask-
6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They go get married at the little church down the street and it's dark.
Oh, good point, good point.
It's dark.
All right, so perhaps with, you know, the low voltage downlit, it may not be that in there. Looking out their, their window, for example, out there. And they haven't mentioned this at all. We were just trying to be really courteous or thoughtful. But, yeah.
And they have some of those, you know, the traffic signs now have that solar panel that lights. Maybe that could be used as well.
So some sort of low voltage light for, just, we've just been in denial at how early it's getting dark.
Well, we understand that.
All right. And then so if we go back to the, the page three, the driveway plan, it contains notes that everything we discussed would be under B and C on page three. The October 3rd dated. So-
Before you continue, do you mind if I interrupt you for one second?
Not at all.
Lee, is that you back there?
Hello.
Hello. I just saw your question. And I would like to answer that so you're not waiting and you're not coming back in. We don't have any jurisdiction over that. If they, I've been here almost 22 years and I've never seen a concert there. But if they wanted one, they'd have to get permits and do what they have to do. So, you know, I can't say, I really can't give you a firm, straight answer on that. I didn't want you to leave with thinking I had ignored you or whatever.
Not at all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Was that a question about our venue?
No.
No, okay.
No. The, the playground.
Gotcha.
And that was so long ago, I didn't want to forget it.
All right. Well, so we, the drawings now show the new proposed access road, the main entrance to the new, the lower level parking lot. RPE asked that we note that, so it's shown as a, as a straight line. You know, he did that as a straight line, but he said the, it may curve to go with the slope just to not be steep. He wants to make sure the grade is reasonable. So that, that area is kind of variously contoured, you know, dropping in level. So the note, the note reads, Ken, this is different from the copy you had. Wow, excuse me, pardon. Nails on a chalkboard like you said.
We don't charge for stress tests during our meetings, everybody's okay.
That's right. So on page five, the note that he added was field fit to the best location. This is A10 on the next page, page five. Note A10, the upper parking lot. And that describes the new access road. But he said to write the field fit to the best location based on grading. So as you can see, you know, it's not going to start where there's a row of cars. It would be starting where it shows, but it may curve maybe 10 to 20 feet to just get the right slope.
What's the width of that road?
That road was to be, let's see. I think, I think no different than the 25 feet already. So I'm assuming it's to match the 25 feet.
So the cars come in both sides?
Yeah, it's two-way. So, all right, we'll take that as an edit, that we mark the width, 25 feet.
Is that?
I think it just required 20 feet for that, but-
Well, I guess my, my issue would be the 25 feet or whatever, to me that's fine, but it's, you need to make sure that apparatus from the fire department can make the, maneuver those turns. If you had to have a fire truck in there.
Yes.
Obviously they take quite a bit more radius than a-
That's right.
A car does. I mean, that's my-
Yes.
The entrance and the exit, like on that.
That's right. The PE noted everywhere the radius is 25 feet to code for the fire trucks. So-
So that'd be 50 feet.
Well, this particular-
The radius is 25.
Right.
So that would be a 50-foot.
No, the diameter is 25.
What's that?
I would think the diameter.
No, no, I'm talking about the turning radius. Is 50 feet.
Well, the radius is 25.
Right. And that's half the-
It's, so the fire truck would have to pull down into the lower parking lot, back up and then be able to pull up forward again.
You still, that, the entrance of those, of that road.
Like up by the parking lot, the upper parking lot?
The existing part, where there's, yeah, the upper parking lot.
Right.
For them to make that turn, a 25-foot radius is half the circle.
Yeah.
Right? That's what the radius is.
Well, radius is, yeah, half the diameter, yeah.
Right. So, and I don't know if it's got to be 50 feet. I don't know what the code is, but-
We have to have the fire marshal and did he already look at it?
The fire chief, he hasn't looked in there.
I'll probably update with the new fire chief.
Just make sure he okayed the road for, for emergency access.
They're usually his biggest truck.
Yeah.
I mean, you look at the distance that they say they needed over there across the street, between the fire station, the ambulance, I mean, not the old ambulance building, to get that fire truck out of there, is quite a distance of there, you know. The fire truck's pretty big.
Yeah. So the new access road doesn't, so you're saying at the corners, we would indicate the R25 radius. Even though, so the approach down, there is no turn. The only turn is up off the existing gravel, the corner of the parking lot. And then it's a straight shot. That's why the design was, it's in that aisle. It's a straight shot for the fire truck down. But then at that bottom, you know, we can definitely spec that it's a 25-foot radius as well on the edges, on the corner, sorry. And we can keep the parking spots clear, so maybe we delete those, the one stall on either side of the, of that new proposed access road?
No, I'm saying whatever the fire chief says is, should be coming, you know what I mean? I just, it just need to be cleared by them, that's all.
And there's a new fire chief? What's her name or his name?
Right now it's David Langley.
David Langley? But there's a, there's a new one coming?
At some point, they're advertising for a new one, so.
Oh, okay. All right, and will you schedule with them to come and do a visit?
I'll make contact with them and get them the updated plans. The last fire chief had reviewed it, but we'll want this one to also be involved.
Okay. So that leads to a question. We did get a response, our PE got a response from the state fire marshal. And they had a question about, well, basically they wanted the cut sheets for the ADA toilets and sinks. So we didn't provide any specs on those. So from our HVAC person, we'll get those sent to them. So it's still in the works, I guess, as we said.
So I'm looking at page five. Where is your main entrance to the upper parking lot? Is it in between the two handicap spaces?
No. They're actually-
Are there four entrances?
Yeah, there are four entrances.
Four entrances, okay.
That's right.
That was my question, pretty much.
Yeah. And I believe we satisfied the five slots or stalls for handicap parking, the five.
Because you've got two over here by the barn.
Yep. Oh, and note three, so on that same page five, note section B, number three, and two and three both have edits to reflect all the discussion and requests there. Kind of just documenting that none of that regrowth area will be mowed or disturbed. The supplemental loam, if needed. Number two is about the foot traffic maintenance and emergency purpose only for the existing. There'll be a new sign there, signage to indicate that. As people exit the barn loop there, they would take a left or a right, but not, there would be a no, no access sign on that corner.
That's the existing road that we said we'd leave as a maintenance road.
You said you were going to pull that back so it wasn't in the resource protection buffer at all. But it says on, I'm looking at page three. It says existing access road to be used for maintenance, emergency access and as a walkway for pedestrians to reach the barn. So you are proposing to leave it just as it is right now?
That's right. That's right.
I mean, we could cut that left corner if that's what you're talking about.
I think there was some discussion as to whether or not we wanted you to pull it right out of the buffer or if you were going to just leave it where it was to, so you save on vegetation or something like that.
I think I'd be okay leaving it where it was. But if it's going to be snow plowed and, and things like that, I'd do, just like you say, cut that inside corner a little bit and slide that other and then you can go through with whatever and plow it out and maintain it and if you ever end up paving or something like that. My thoughts with the access to that second parking lot, I thought it was going to be another driveway before the other parking lot. I don't know if that's going to be a congestion. It's very overflow in that second lot anyways. It's not a tremendous amount, but-
I thought it was going to be from, I'm sorry, we don't have our-
Before the parking lot.
Before the parking lot.
It's own little roadway down to it.
It's own roadway going down.
That way there you don't have to try to get through the first parking lot to get to the second one.
I see. That, so that area is sloped. There are several large-
We had talked about that.
Yeah, there's large, for large trees and it slopes up. So it would need a lot more terraforming to move the road to the head of the parking lot. So when we were discussing with our PE, he didn't see a problem with just pulling into the parking lot and then continuing to go down to the lower level. It was like the least disruptive way down to that bottom. And then the cars could go left or right.
What's the distance between your parking spaces in your, on your upper lot?
That distance, that distance, the aisle, the aisle.
Yeah, the aisle.
It's code, it's code, whatever.
Which is?
26, I believe. 26 between-
The aisle, the people go in and out, 26 feet.
Yeah. And then the road down is now 25. So, but we can curve those corners like we talked about.
It's like more than a foot difference on the plan. The width of the road 25 and the width of the, where the two arrows is, looks wider than just one more foot.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
It looks more like 30 feet or something.
In between here and-
Yeah, this looks substantially wider than that.
Right, it does.
But if it's proposed to be 25, I think that, as long as-
As long as it's-
Structurally works, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll add, all right, we'll add, we'll add that to the note. Or where, where should it go? Probably the, so maybe we'll put it on Plan Three because that's where it lists driveways. So C, C1 will document that 25 feet with radius. As I say, one.
I guess I'll leave this to the fire chief. But it's the same thing coming off the existing road to turn into that parking lot. The upper parking lot. You know, they, they can't turn that fire truck down in there.
Right.
With cars parked there.
Yeah, we'll indicate that radius. That's actually already all gravel. So it's really, there's really generous allotments. It looks like the drawing is a little too linear. But really, the, sometimes the, with the gravel on that main road, it's more than 25 feet wide. You know, the existing entrance way, it's more than 25 in most places. When we, when we do landscaping, we're going to minimize anything on the apple orchard side just to make it easy to plow. Those boulders that are, like there, there's like plenty of leeway to allow that, the fire truck in.
I guess on your map here, you could show that on your print.
Yeah, that's good.
Bringing it out to the road, you know, at an angle or whatever.
Dotting that line and making it show. Okay.
So that you can see that.
Yep.
And that would absolve the, give them plenty of turning, I would assume, but-
Already.
You're talking just on that first lane, Dennis?
Yeah.
Yep, where the three boulders are in the first lane.
Whatever, 10, 15 feet there to the road.
Yeah, yeah. That's right, there is definitely plenty of space.
That would probably make the fire chief happy.
Okay. So Ken, we can get a fresh print for you even as soon as tomorrow, late afternoon, if that helps to get to the fire chief?
I've got one.
With our edits, with the edits we can have for you.
Yep, and then we'll mark it up, get it back to you and hopefully just have another final revision of it.
Okay.
Do you know how many parking cars are on the upper lot? Do you know how many parking cars are on the upper lot?
That one is, it's on one of the plans, it's sixty, I believe. It is the parking plan, upper number note A1, sixty stalls.
In lower?
The lower is fifty spaces, at least. The, because we're shaping, do you see, oh, that was the other major note. Do you see the new dashed line? So if you look at page five, the parking plan, you'll see that there's a new dashed line where the comments were to try to make that lower levels edge more parallel to the upper level, right? So that we could get more spots in and keep further away from that resource zone. So that is, the PE said that kind of the site conditions, we don't know exactly how far back before it gets really steep and then becomes a major terraforming project, but there is a good twenty-ish feet where it's very gradual. So we could bulldoze and re-taper that edge. So there could be more than fifty spots that are available in the bottom, lower level.
So that new, new south parking area boundary, all the parking spaces will come up to there?
That's right, they would shift as we can.
Yeah, so on the next plan, I would just pull those right up to it.
Okay. All right, actually move that up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're more parallel, right.
How about a fence between the two levels?
At the top of the retaining wall on the one end?
Yeah.
Is there actually a wall there or just a steep slope?
There's, it's actually, there is some large boulders on this, on the, sort of the portion to the right, but there is enough flatland where our parking lot is not going up to the edge of the slope. So there's trees up there as well, so there's no way a car could fall off that...
I wasn't, I wasn't really thinking too much about the cars as much as I was. Especially young people coming to their weddings and running and playing tag or whatever they're doing and end up falling down. That's what I was concerned with.
I see.
We're hoping to keep them like on the other side of the orchard.
Good luck with that.
Volleyball court and a budget board.
Right, right.
They don't go there.
When I worked at the school, we fenced in the playground, and the goal was to keep them inside the fence.
I wouldn't tell them that.
Sometimes it did.
You're right.
Tell them that, because you're just telling them the fence didn't work.
We just opened the gate with proper supervision.
We're also going to have like a parking attendance?
Yes, you had said that, that's very...
The crowds and...
Did we have a calculation on that when we were talking last time?
We did.
We did.
You mentioned like one per forty, I believe it was?
Yes, that is...
In one of your notes.
Yes, exactly, it is.
One per fifty, one per forty. I think it was one per fifty, last time we talked.
Because you were talking about, was it cars or people? And we mentioned that there'd probably be two people per car.
Yeah, I thought we just divided the spaces up.
Yep.
Because you're at one hundred and ten spaces.
So I'll make sure that's...
One per forty cars.
Yeah.
I think the same thing came up last time.
Yeah.
Emily said one per forty, not one per fifty.
Okay. There's a little bit, it's a little bit split between two plans, because one is signage driveways, so we were making a new driveway, but the parking is actually only, that's probably where we should put it, is on page five. Parking barrier free note. So the note to add is one parking attendant per?
Forty cars.
Forty cars, okay.
Which we were thinking about having three attendants anyways, so that would...
That's why I was dividing it out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll make a new request to add number eleven.
Well, if you look at, you're in the upper parking lot, four, five, six, nine, ten. Seven, eight are missing, so you just clean that up. It may dry, and I'd have to just grab...
Those are a secret.
You really see that?
All right. Good.
Does the board feel comfortable enough that with our changes that we make, that we could get done very quickly, that we could go forward with a public meeting soon?
We haven't had a public hearing yet.
We haven't had a public hearing yet.
We did have our neighbor meet and greet last Friday, yes, yes. We had a decent turnout. How many would you say?
Between fifteen and eighteen, I think.
Fifteen, eighteen people?
Including you guys?
No, no.
No, so we all chatted with different pockets of neighbors, and some neighbors brought friends to help add their input, and it's good. Yeah, so, you know, as we said in an email, donuts were munched, cider was sipped, and we seemed to allay concerns. Most of it was around, you know, you're not going to become a concert venue, are you? And we said, no, you know, that's not our goal at all, we don't want that. And we will, we said there'll always be an owner on site, or a manager, or both. They'll be careful, ten o'clock, plug is yanked, decibels at the border, fifty decibels. We'll buy a little unit. We know the phone apps are popular, but they're all discredited as being not truly...
What do you want for free?
Or useful, right, and they're free.
Yeah.
So we'll buy a unit that we can have, and the manager can make sure that we're within fifty.
I have a unit and they're not that expensive.
It's great. Well, and one of the neighbors actually said, fifty, that doesn't seem like enough. Lawnmowers louder than that.
I think.
Right? So we said, well, we'll go for seventy then.
Are you going to gate that off?
Yes, yes.
So there'll be a Knox box on that?
A what box?
Knox box, there'll be a key for the fire department to be able to get access.
Well, yeah, it won't be, well, let's see, I'm not sure. It won't be locked when people are there.
No, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But when there's nothing going on.
All vacant, right, it would be locked.
And so there would be need to be...
Oh, so they need to get in if they...
There'd need to be a Knox box.
Right, that'd be good. Okay, so lock...
Knox box.
K-N-O-X.
Ah, okay. And that... For the fire department, so let's add that, we'll add that to the roadway plan, is that okay? The driveway plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Right, that's a conversation.
Page five.
Chief, anyway.
Okay, so we'll put that as a number nine. Knox box on gate. Okay.
Also, the decibels, maximum sixty during the day, fifty at night.
Do we, and we...
Yeah, it's in good neighbors.
Yeah.
Forgot that one. A gravel pit.
That's in the ordinance anyways.
Yeah, we didn't write...
Yeah, so just, you can add it somewhere, it's on page five works. That seems to be the general note section.
Parking, barrier, lighting, power, private well. Yeah, that sounds good.
So the decibels, sixty day, fifty night, owner on site during operation?
Yep, we did spec owner or manager or both, is that okay?
Yep.
Because the manager will be trained to our standards and work with us for several years before being promoted, that idea.
And then you get Knox box in on that one.
Yeah, and at night, so just because we like clarity, when is night?
Sunrise, sunset?
It's okay. And I think there's like three categories of sunset, right? On the apps, I'm like, what? Solar dusk or something, I forget what it's called, but there's a lot, but we'll say...
Twilight, before, what it means before twilight, shooting time.
Golden hour for our, all right, so we'll say dusk.
Do we want to see about a public hearing for our first meeting in November seven?
I've lost my phone in here.
So I'm looking at your notes on page five, note number three, proposed parking surface upgrades?
Yes.
So year one, compacted gravel refresh is needed. Now, your two to three, recycled asphalt applied, is that a given, you're going to be doing that?
Well, so, there's pros and cons, right? The permeability factor, so rap is different than asphalt.
Yeah, right. And then you have your four to five, full paving if required.
Right.
So, and this is what I'm saying, if you're going to be paving these parking lots, we're going to need a little bit more probably of your stormwater management plan than what is here.
Okay.
Because for a paved parking lot in the lower area right next to the RP zone, you're going to need something more than this.
That's right, so that...
And did you consider the idea of having the lower parking area grassed? Vegetated, kind of like we were talking about those fairgrounds?
Right, so the full paving, we'd like not to do it. One of our role model is Vinegar Hill Theater. Their whole parking lot is just gravel and not, you know, maintained to nice flat standards like we were going to do. So we want to kind of keep that rustic feel. We didn't want the permeability issues with paving. So just good dense-packed gravel would be great. The rap, it was just an option. If even, it's more like what is the quality, what's the customer, the guest experience? You know, gravel, you know, is it, what kind of gravel? You know, is it stone dust topped, right, which can be, could be hard-packed and nice? I think we, if we could have some flexibility on whether to do the rap or not, paving probably ideally not, I mean, maybe we could strike that. It was only, the if required was really if the board said you had to pave, right? But there's so many venues that aren't paved, we were hoping not to be the one exception, right, to add all that expense. So what do you think?
I would think that the parking lot would have to be built according to our parking lot standards.
Yeah.
It's in our ordinance.
Right, it's not required that it be paved. I encourage you not to pave.
But what you have on it for
But what you should have on it.
A surface is laid out in our ordinance.
And you're not required to have recycled asphalt either.
Okay, right.
No, please don't get glue, old tires chopped up kind of stuff.
Which probably wouldn't look as good as gravel.
Right.
P-stone.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure in the ordinance it has to be tough with crushed gravel.
Okay, great, then.
So you want to get rid of that two, three-year, four-year, five-year thing, because otherwise that'll haunt you.
Yeah, I want to clean that up, and that'll help you with your stormwater.
Okay.
I would think, because if you're going to be paving, we're going to want
That's right.
Retention basis or something.
Okay.
I'm not versed well enough to tell you what part of this own ordinance parking lot thing it's in, but I know what's in there.
We can find it, all right. And we'll reference it per ordinance.
Yeah.
X, Y, Z. Oh yeah, that's on the other plan, the Knox box, okay.
Did you make your own cider?
No.
No.
No, it didn't.
But we did put it in its own container to look like we did.
We actually should have like cold cider and hot cider. We only brought hot cider, and some people are like, oh, we really want a cold cider. But it was a cold night.
It was chilly.
Next time.
We're getting experience already with pleasing the customer.
So how does this November seventh look for you all for?
We can certainly do any night. Is there potentially a slot, just because of winter coming and the work? Is there any hearing that has space sooner than that? Just not to put undue stress on you all, but...
Could put us on a callback list.
The waitlist.
Nobody ever walks away from a sidewalk, they don't.
Right, but if we don't seem to have any kind of, you know, contentious development...
I understand, you need, you are chomping at the bit.
Yes.
That's the notice in the paper, it's hard for us to get the notices in the paper. And the abuddhas notices all out in the two weeks.
Because this particular now sidewalk is when we do have to go notify your abuddhas. If you heard for this public hearing. You know, if you heard this before, it was just a sidewalk, then different cat altogether. This, because it's a public, we have to notify your abuddhas. There's a timeframe, publications. I'm sorry, we only meet twice a month.
No, that's plenty.
And there happens to be five Thursdays.
And there are five Thursdays in this month. And we didn't do it on purpose, we really didn't.
All right, so that means then the best, the official date is November seven? Right.
In the meantime, we'll try to get your designer to have a full-size plan.
Yes.
And kind of merge three and four, five maybe, the notes all onto one, and get a signature block for the board to sign.
Okay, so we'll tell them, so merge all notes from three, four, and five into one sheet for signature.
Five would be better. Those are your notes, and we need a signature box.
Oh, so to put the signature box on?
On the plan.
Oh, so should he make a new sheet that is just notes to sign?
No, 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 no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You want your notes on this, but put them together.
Okay.
You know, rather than a little bit here, or the next page, a little bit, put them together.
Just shrink the drawing down a little bit.
Shrink the drawing down a little bit.
I mean, put one, put the notes in all in one page, and...
Yeah, similar to page four, page four looks like your better page. Move all the notes to clear it up, get the signature block.
I see, so right now the notes, though, are referring to like the specific title, like four is only snow management notes.
That's okay.
So all the references in the drawing would...
That'd be just different paragraphs, kind of.
Yeah, just different paragraphs.
And if you don't want it for a condition, now's the time to say, like the paving, now's the time to get it out of there, otherwise
Okay.
Four years from now, somebody could be looking for your paving.
Okay.
And on your first page is where I'd like to see the signature box. And your guys should know what it is.
Yeah, okay, so the signature box is on every page in that first approved actant right there on the right edge. So...
Yeah, it'll be five lines.
Five lines, yeah.
For everybody to sign.
Okay.
Oh yeah, actually, kind of like
Ah, okay, approved, so we'll do five lines, okay.
If he's going to do, you know, larger one and...
Move everything on to the main plan.
On to the main plan.
These will be supplemental.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and a cover page.
Okay, and so the cover page will have...
Address what you are, where you are. I mean, this, this doesn't say, does it say anything on it about what it is?
That's right, we do have a cover page that was that colorful one with the barn. That was for our pre-con.
Okay, that's your cover page.
Take that one, put it back, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Will the new stuff they give us be on something this size can, or be the big?
It'll be a full-size.
Yeah, full sheets, yeah. Okay.
And that'd be a couple of those, and the rest all small ones for them.
Okay.
And we'll get the board to sign one for us and one for you guys.
So we only need two copies of the bigger ones?
Yeah.
Okay, two big ones, nine small ones. All right, and so we'll take all the notes from three, four, and five. We won't delete them from three, four, and five, but we'll concatenate them into a sheet that...
Why would you want to leave them on these pages?
Well, he's going to give a... Well, he's gonna give a smaller plan.
Oh, okay.
Supplemental.
Yeah, so there'll be like a new smaller one without the giant circle, but it'll have everything, is that, is that right? Not, not to, you might have hit my perfectionistic button, because.
You had it all separated and all.
I could let it go, right, like, like, four is just snow management, so, but I can do it, I think we get it, right?
Yes, we, we do.
I think, I think they do.
Man on the chair, wants a big box.
Cut his mic. I'm a graphic designer.
Hopefully, don't tell your engineer you have this much time, put him on pressure for the next meeting, get it into me, we'll look, we'll review it, get it finished up and.
Okay.
Be ready for November seventh, is that what that was?
It would be.
That means getting tonight, like.
Maybe just get this list right out.
Thank you. They'll probably want to look over your, just how your parking lots are, are gonna drain, the sloping of them, and I would ask, at least on the lower parking lot, that you have the thing sloped gently away from the resource. I mean, not much, it's not like it's a hill, you know what I mean?
Yeah, towards the upper parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that buffer between the two would serve to catch stormwater from both of them potentially.
Maybe higher than the parking lot, so you could do a detention area of some kind.
Yeah, we just don't want water flowing from the parking lot toward the resource.
Yeah, that's right. Roll it back, grade it back.
Yeah, that would have to do with your grading.
Yeah.
So is, is what we have tonight considered a preliminary plan?
That is subdivision talk.
Yeah, that's subdivision talk.
This is like plan review or just conditional use? Yeah, we are cycle.
Site plan review at this point.
Where's that one? Do we want to run through any of that tonight?
Should we run through that tonight?
Site plan review.
Maybe checklist?
You got a checklist?
Yeah, right here, it's a pink one.
Yeah, it's right here.
Great.
We can run through it, you guys.
Alright, thank you.
It would be a good idea.
You have your teal books.
Yeah.
Go to the pink page in the teal book.
So we'll start with, you want me to read through it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You do it, please.
Just start with our required submissions, make sure we got all those things?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got the application, nine copies, which you've given to us a couple times, we can look at it. Alright, the list of waivers requested, you did have a couple waivers you were asking for.
The only one that we were asking for was that lower lot parking with the, that protection zone, but we, we are no longer looking for that waiver.
Also, the topo map, you wanted to waive the contours.
The two foot contour?
Yeah, I don't think we actually voted on that, but I think that if you, I would think that the. I'll make a motion that we waive the two foot contours unless anyone sees a reason to include that on the plans.
I second your motion.
So one of the reasons for waiving it, it was an existing gravel pit wide open, just for findings of fact, so we understand why we waived it.
Yeah.
Because somebody else has won it, and they'll think that the exact same thing, but it's an existing.
Someone else is doing a similar kind of project, and, and maybe we, we want that from them.
Exactly, yeah, because they're 456 parking spaces, and this is only 60.
Right, exactly.
It's an existing gravel pit, I think we can get the contours to roll and, yeah, that works.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion set on the floor, second to waive the two foot contour, on favor? Dennis, are you, oh, no, I'm sorry, you're not, you're not, passes?
He's in timeout.
I'm just causing problems, I'm not.
That's okay.
Committing myself to anything.
Passes, thank you.
So now we're on to list of the abutters within 50 feet of property lines, which I think.
We have.
I think we have that somewhere, did you supply that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's with the application.
With the application.
The boundary court, nine copies, the stormwater erosion sedimentation control plan, you did submit a plan, I had it just a second ago. Did anybody?
This one?
Yep, right here, did anybody find anything of interest they wanted to comment on? It looks like it's mostly focused on around the buildings.
Right.
And we would, would like you to do something for stormwater between the two parking areas, like we were saying, sloping the, at least the lower parking area away from the resource.
To go there, right, okay.
So you make that note on the next plan?
That? Yep.
Haven't really gotten a landscaping plan from you yet.
Oh, the actual beautification element, yes, we, we have one actually, it hasn't been, I guess, the species and types of shrubs or bushes haven't been set by the nursery, but just where things are.
Okay.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Yeah, we'd love to see that.
We'd love to see it, yeah.
Alright.
And we know you have a snow disposal plan on there.
Yes.
We just want to make sure that none of the piles are inside the resource protection buffer, which you already knew.
That's right, yeah, that's there.
And what do we think about the emergency access now with the things we talked about?
We'll wait for fire department approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the survey is one inch too.
Site access, so as long as it's approved by emergency vehicles, that's a lot, or like a limo, I mean, as long as you, you know, as long as you can turn the things around in there, I think we're happy with that.
Okay.
Water supply, I think you're gonna have enough water for the proposed use. Septic, you're got taken care of, lighting configuration, you do have a lot of lighting, lighting on this thing.
It's all down lighting though.
Yeah.
Yep, and mostly all low voltage, except on the sides of the corners of the buildings, but they're all down, spots.
Are those solar light, or are you gonna, you're gonna run power to them?
Run true, true, like line volt to the, to the dawn to dusk timer, with the night mode, so they're always lit, night mode, but all down. No, no solar, except on that sign, perhaps the one across from the Myers driveway, that could be solar. Yeah, I don't know if it is.
Lights are all gonna be all LED?
Yeah, all LED.
Or, the lights gonna be turned off at a certain time if you're not open?
So, the transformers that we like are, they're solar voltaic, or photovoltaic, sorry, so they, they trigger on automatically at night and shut off at dawn.
Yeah.
But there's a model that's our favorite that has a low power mode, so that they're always on at this half power, so like one watt of power.
Yeah.
So, the, the reason is, back in a prior experience, like, it can make, like, guests nervous that they look out on the, like, they step out the door and it's pitch black, and they don't know that if they just walk five feet, they'll kick on, right, if they're motion detected. So, by keeping the motion at half, people are more, oh, okay, good, and then they can trigger the motion sensor, so that's why. It shouldn't affect, again, they're all downlit, so it, it shouldn't light up the night sky or to cause light pollution, that's what we've seen.
So you wouldn't have any dark time, so to speak, from like 2:00 AM to?
Right, that, that's our intention, is to not have dark time, plus for security, you know, some extra lights are a sign that someone's around, it's not abandoned, plus the, the, the security cameras, it'll help them with their night vision to have some lighting. They all have that infrared invisible floodlight, you know how they do that, well, pitch black is still not ideal for them, so having that very low dim lighting helps them.
But your insurance company would probably like it.
Yeah, that could be.
Insurance company might like it a lot.
Maybe we should make a note that we, we would have that to help the premiums, right?
Right.
Alright.
I mean, a lot of insurance companies require a certain amount of lighting.
Oh yeah.
You know, at least on the buildings.
Right, and we'll make that a point to.
That till dawn.
Okay.
In the parking lots, you have the same proposal?
Yes, yeah.
As on the buildings?
Yes, for, for them, they would be on like six by six posts with the little, you know, arm.
Yeah.
Like a little barn light pointing down, so they'll be lit, and they won't be covered by snow, so they'll be above, like, probably at the level of a, maybe five feet off the ground is where they would shine.
Yeah.
Sort of a gooseneck sort of?
Yeah, yeah, like those, we call them barn lights, but.
Yeah. Right.
A little hood. Or shade.
So we've gone through that.
You got the parking plan.
Got the parking plan.
And the waste trash disposal plan, you have that on there, you've even got a compost listed on there. Do we want to run through? Site review process checklist tonight?
We might as well, if there's an issue, come up with it now.
Come up with it now, exactly.
Yeah. So applicability of site plan review, proposed use, the construction placement, new building, I'm on 6.6.4.1, also in the pink, it's just a couple pages back, that's what we're looking at. So construction slash placement of new building structure accessory buildings, we've got that. So do we, we want to go through and check these things off?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Check that off, expansion of existing building structure, accessory buildings increasing total floor area, do we have, do we need numbers for that?
You know, adding on to your buildings, right?
That's right, not, no.
No expansions of any existing.
No expansions, that's right.
Conversion of existing buildings or portion from residential to non-residential use, which you are taking those two existing cabins and, and upgrading them.
That's right.
And, so, yes, you are doing that.
But not for tenant, like not a, like no one's gonna live there for a six month rental.
Are people gonna be staying overnight, like say, say some people don't want to leave the site and drive, they, you will have some overnight facilities or?
Yep, ten, five beds, 10 guests.
Okay.
Three in one cottage, two in the other, so.
Yeah. And they are establishing new non-residential uses.
That's the existing cape and the existing salt box.
Yes.
Cape is how many?
A three bedroom.
And the salt box?
Two bedroom.
Just have them add that to the plan too as well. As a note.
Okay.
Or, right, right where it has the description of the cape, 20 by 40, and throw three bedroom in there.
Ah, okay.
The salt box, two bedroom.
So that would be.
Short term rental, some sort of note in there for short term.
Make it a specific.
Three days.
Oh, well, I'm not.
Two days, whatever you're gonna do.
Event rental.
Event rental, that's right.
Your event, you, you've got, you know, a day before, a day after, or.
That's right.
Something like that, make it quite, in, in six months, I don't want to find out that it's a full flood, it's B and B. And they're still there.
Right, no, no, no.
You know.
So, so the play, it looks as if the plan, um, we don't want it on the existing conditions.
Would that be on your front page?
You could put it as a note on your front page.
Notes on your front page.
Oh, I see, okay, so the cover page notes would be about the, like, the business intentions, that, would that be where this lodging component goes?
Do we have?
That would be on the main page that we talked about with the signature blocks.
Okay, alright.
All your notes would be on that page.
Okay.
All of them.
All notes.
From every page.
These two fellows got it.
That's right.
Another example, one we were just looking at tonight, it has artwork notes on this side, and then general notes on this side, here's your signature block down here.
Okay.
Just another template.
Oh, that's good, okay, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I take a picture of that?
You can have that one, I've got a, we've got extra copies.
That would help us a lot.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
So establishment of new use, non-structural, non-residential uses, so like the parking lot, so they are doing that.
20 units.
There's conversion of existing use or portion to another use if changing the basic nature of the existing use, increasing intensity of impacts of the use. But you're just creating a new use, you're not really, not intensifying it, construction of a residential building, you're not really doing that, are you?
No.
Are any of you gonna be living there?
No.
Okay. Modification or expansion of existing residential structure by three or more in a five year period.
Three or more dwelling units, I assume that means.
Yeah.
It does mean that.
That just doesn't apply.
Conversion of an existing non-residential building or structure or portion three or more dwelling units within a five year period, so, we're not doing dwelling units, so we don't need to worry about that. Construction slash expansion of paved areas or other impervious surfaces involving an area of more than 2,500 square feet within a three year period. Did you come up with a total impervious coverage counting your barn and?
Yes, it's in this, this, the permeability study there from the PE.
It's in here?
Yes.
In this one?
Yep. Oh, Ken, that was a separate, do you remember they were the large sheets that we dropped off, it actually had before and after.
Stormwater counts.
Yeah, stormwater, it's, we never printed a small set, only the large ones.
3,600 square feet for the event barn.
Okay, so they are. Increasing impervious surface more than 2,500 square feet within a three year period, but.
Well, there's the existing already cleared gravel.
Well, that includes.
Yes. Our expansion is actually, I don't, I don't have that fresh in my memory what the PE wrote, but we're not expanding much, if, if at all, because what was there was already there, already gravel, as you saw.
So you're not expanding it?
No, it is there.
In existence now.
Yep, it is in existence.
Okay, so now we're on to review procedure, pre-application, site inspection has been scheduled, we did that, potential waivers and variations from the submission requirements have been discussed, we did that. The following information has been submitted, proposed site location size and general characteristics, yes, proposed na, nature of proposed use and potential development, yes, that's fairly clear. Existing municipal regulations and applicability to the project, as far as we're aware.
Right.
Request for waivers and submission requirements, we did that one. Okay, so the application has been reviewed and. Receipt sent to the applicant, notor, notification sent to abutters within 500 feet by first class mail, have we done that?
No, that's what we're doing now for the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
But when we sent out the neighbor meet and greet, we did a thousand foot invite radius, so we have that receipt for, if you need to see that, of all the mailing.
Yeah, so we'll do 500 for the public hearing, and I would assume you weeded out all the questions, so probably none will show.
That's right, just our fans and, yeah, all friends.
Um, we've notified the selectman, the fire chief, the road commissioner and the code enforcement officer, I think we, I don't know if we notified the road commissioner, but.
Yep, that'll be as we move into public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, is that Will?
No, it's Joe.
No, it's Joe. It's Joe, okay.
Okay, so...
Thirty days.
Leading through a couple more of these. Okay, um, I think we're doing pretty well under application has been reviewed. Final approval filing, we'll wait until...
Wait until the...
Until after the hearing.
In the hearing, after the hearing. Yeah.
I think we're looking pretty good.
Yeah, I think this is a good place to... We are, until the public hearing. This is a good place to start.
Okay.
And, um...
So what should we do to prepare for the public hearing? What's...
You're going to take the plan, you're going to get together before that.
Yes.
Uh, make any changes to it, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
You know, you've already talked to your butters within a thousand.
Yeah.
We'll notify within 500. Uh, we'll update the fire chief, road commissioner.
Road commissioner. And anything in particular, do we prepare a presentation for the public at that point?
You can, if somebody shows up.
Are we before or after the subdivision?
Public hearings are usually first.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a large audience.
We have a large audience.
I would, I would say truly a public hearing, be who you are, you met your neighbors at your little invite, be who you are, tell them, if somebody asks you, tell them what your plan is. And be prepared to tell them a little bit about yourself. And, you know, then go forth and get people married, or whatever you're going to use the word for.
That's right.
You know, I mean, that's what I would say, you don't need a dog and pony show, you don't need a power plant.
Okay.
Try to make sure that you work closely with Kenny, so that you have everything.
Yeah, just make sure these are
Before the public hearing.
Up to date.
Okay.
As quickly as you can.
Alrighty.
Brenda's not here, so... Brenda, we're going to give you some more work to send out notices.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
I have a question, for the fire, um, designs that we're going to have to wait for the visit, uh, what's the timeline? Because we're going to have, we're going to have edits to do on the road.
Oh, yeah.
With the fire chief.
What's the best contact for us to make if we've got questions? Who do you want us to contact?
You could use my cell still, the 450-6378. And we, um, we can have our PE finish before you hand the new plans to the fire marshal, uh, fire chief, if that helps. When do you think maybe it should be in your hands?
The plan?
Yeah, the revi, all the...
Two weeks.
Oh, okay, I was thinking you were going to say Friday or something.
That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, because you wouldn't want the...
You want to tell your designer, we're looking for that tomorrow, we get it in two weeks.
Maybe you'll see what the fire chief has to say.
Yeah.
There's no sense in changing it afterwards, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay, okay.
And then the planning board is doing a site visit again?
No, no.
She meant, she meant public hearing.
Yeah, I think I corrected myself.
Oh, okay.
You all get tired.
I thought there was a public hearing sidewalk as well.
No, no, we're all tired, or I speak for myself.
Understand.
But, uh, you know, the 7th of November? Are you saying 5 o'clock?
No.
No, just a public hearing, well, I know, but 7:00. 7:00 and be first, I am tired, my apologies, everybody.
We will take our leave then and say, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thanks, good night, thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
And you know what, we're not going to have it at 8:00 AM either. That's what I got down here. Yes, Steve?
We'll get it in 20 minutes.
We'll be down in 20 minutes, we have some stuff to talk about.
No ice cream break.
That's long gone.
So hot.
Oh, yeah. Nothing in the freezer?
Yeah, two locations.
You have some?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
What time is it?
9:35.
9:35.
Should we just come behind you, or?
My boss is at Lisbon, Maine, but he does, does do some stuff.
You have two practical locations?
Yeah, one's only in addition.
What is this, Ken?
Uh, Sawyer Road, is that am I right? Yeah, Sawyer Road, on Horns Pond. So this is only in addition, it's not a removal of 50% of the structure, but anytime we're doing a foundation outside the original structure, it needs a planning board review. So they weren't doing a foundation underneath the existing camp?
This is existing.
I'm sorry, what are they doing, Ken?
Just an addition on the side of the camp.
Okay.
Is this all proposed? This whole thing's proposed?
This whole section?
Just that one side, right? There should be some arrows going.
Okay, so the whole orange arrow section? They're like doubling their size?
Uh, they're ripping down the porch, there's a porch section. This really sucks without the, um, screen.
Yeah, there's no way, you want to get these things done tonight?
Uh, this was for the last meeting?
Yeah.
I didn't do that last one, so...
Yeah.
The existing camp has P's underneath it, they're not doing a foundation under that, they're only doing the foundation on the addition.
Oh, okay. Oh, so it's...
They're taking that porch off?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then adding?
And then adding in that area.
Okay.
Did they get a 30% expansion for the porch back in the day?
No.
Part of the original structure?
Yes.
So there's a, did you guys get an orange arrow?
I think I sent them both different ways.
Where's, where's the water?
Oh, no.
Away from the addition.
Uh, I don't see where it says it on there.
Yeah, probably not, you've got to get the other one.
Alright, I think I'm going to school.
I'll go to that one, so...
Sorry, I thought you had the same.
Yeah, no.
We'll keep you updated.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Alright, so it's no closer, you're not changing any, it's no closer to the water?
No, no, the, the regular camp doesn't move.
So what do they, what do they need from us?
Um, because the foundation goes outside of the existing footprint of the camp, we're supposed to, um, approve a location, so you could say pick up the camp and move the camp, but they're not proposing a foundation underneath the camp, they're going to keep it as-is.
Oh, I see, so because they're kicking, I see.
So is there any kind of foundation there now?
Under the camp? No, it's on P's.
Oh, okay. What about where that porch is?
I'll put the picture up for you.
What are the pink little dots?
Must be trees.
Trees.
Okay. So it, doesn't it all make, is there room to move it back?
Well, they're not doing a foundation underneath the existing camp.
They're all numbered.
Yeah.
And we have a five-year window, they wouldn't be able to come back to piecemeal it together, so...
Maybe they're all, you know, they grow a tree by points.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
But I'm wrong. I think the numbers of the amount of trees there are, they got them all numbered.
I was hoping to have this at the last meeting go through, and it, it just came in that day or the day before, so...
Six, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have a lot of trees.
It's pretty interesting how they did that.
Yeah.
That's always like, what are they?
It's per plan, and is there a date on the plan?
No, they must be planned.
We're trying to decipher the color coding on this.
Yeah, I, can you put it up first, I'll see?
How about this, does this work?
Hold on.
With the pink dots?
Yeah.
And then we've got pines, um,
Of the black ones.
rotated, and then we have like little, little black dots over here.
The orange is mine, I can tell you that. Hey, we're just happy when it doesn't come in on a napkin.
I just, I'm impressed they got every tree.
Well, we like to know what's there.
It's all size proportion, you know what I mean? That's pretty impressive.
Someone had way too much time on their hands. I would like to bring forward tonight about separating our meetings.
Yeah, talk about that again?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sorry he left, but...
No, I've got no questions on this.
You're good with that?
I'm good, I'm good with this.
Yep.
I'm not voting anyway.
No, you're in.
You're in now.
I gotta commit myself.
Sure.
Donovan's got a proposal.
Make a motion that we accept the proposed...
September 10th.
They're shown on the plan?
Yeah.
They're shown on the plan.
They did September 10th, 2019.
Is that it?
Okay. You're very good.
Alright, one more. This one is actually same situation, but it's a foundation under a deck.
They're adding the foundation under the deck?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'd like to.
Where is this?
Uh, second basin, third basin? Second.
What road?
Uh, Red Gate.
Red Gate, it must be, second basin. It's got to be the second basin then?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's, it's like a landing around the tree.
So, so this is called Red Gate, second basin?
Yeah.
Red Gate Road, second basin, Great East Lake.
Great East.
That would take quite a bit of excavation stuff, wouldn't it, Ken?
Um, this one is really...
So is this an addition, or?
Um, it would be a foundation underneath a existing structure, this time the structure is a deck, and that would remain, uh, they're going to rip the deck off, throw it away, do a foundation underneath it, and then a rubber roof deck. Uh, it's for storage. I had some good photos online, but...
Hmm, how far away from the water is it?
Forty-nine, 50 feet.
That drain you see in that picture goes into the lake.
Hmm, I doubt that, but... Oh, what do I got here?
It looks like it's on the lake side.
The deck's on the lake side, it probably is.
Uh, just, yeah, it's just, I mean, that's really steep over there, too.
Yeah, it's horribly, I had some great pictures, I didn't remember.
Put them up, please?
Yeah, I already did that, I was opening one up while you were here.
This is the only thing that concerns me, is that bad pipe coming out from under the deck.
Uh, let me see the picture of it. It'll all be ripped out anyways, so...
The pipe. While we're looking at pictures...
You guys did get any of these, did you?
No.
While we're doing that, I would like you to consider, with the way things are going and the time it is tonight, we've talked once before, I know we meet twice a month, we are thinking, or what would you all think of meeting two more Thursdays a month, taking the subdivision on its own. And, uh, we do first and third, that would be our regular planning board meeting for all this sort of thing, for the people we saw tonight, you know, that sort of, you know...
Meet downstairs?
And we, and we can meet downstairs. And then when it comes to subdivision, we're up here.
This particular subdivision?
This, but, this is not an ongoing thing, this would be just this particular subdivision.
My, my only problem is that, um, my work schedule might not allow me to be here every Thursday night.
Well, I understand that, and I think that can be true for any of us, you know? But I understand your, your work schedules.
Yeah, there's...
I'm going to be gone a couple of weeks in November.
I would rather not, because some of this stuff is going to quiet down a little bit. Is there a lot more coming in the park?
I see, there's a lot of talk, and whether it facilitates or not, I mean, when we had the, back in 2000 or so, it was nothing to go to 11:30.
Right.
But, uh, that gets, and, and as I tell the applicants, after 9 o'clock, it's either yes, 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 or no, no, no. One or the other, so it's just on, which isn't fair to them either, or, or a board of volunteers.
We do it a different night? That might work.
Besides, I still run into the same problem, where my work schedule changes so often, um, and there's a lot of times I give, I give up work to be here, and I can't always do that, give up work to do that, to be here, because then I lose money.
True.
I mean, we can, we would lose our workshop days if we were meeting every week, because we know we can't take it all.
Yeah.
But, um, I'm getting letters already, Ken's getting letters already, so we have to be prepared. Our i's will be dotted, our t's will be crossed. I wish you could have all been with us for the last two days, we learned a lot. Can we, well, can I make a suggestion? Yeah. That, um, the subdivision goes at the end of the meeting? So that way, we're not making everyone else wait?
Can we start at 6?
No. That works.
Got to kick out Girl Scouts.
They can go downstairs.
If they don't bring their litter.
Yeah. We get somebody to clean the place.
Well, we got to make a vote on this before we run out of time, right?
Yeah.
We got five minutes.
Okay.
I think we change it to 6.
Do we get the five-minute sign?
We got the five-minute sign, alright, let's get back to that now that you've all seen the pictures.
Okay, so is this the deck here also? So this is the deck and the huge?
Yeah.
Yep.
It wouldn't be under the stairs, just the deck area, once that came out, that, that drain would all come out, because they're digging a foundation around that.
What, what is attached to that drain?
I would think that's a foundation drain for when they actually did the project back in the 70s, but I don't, I...
You don't happen to think that that's maybe, uh, something that was supposed to go to a dry well at some point?
They, they do have a septic system out there, but, um...
Does that mean anything?
But there's many drains up there in the lake, that come from the roads and stuff like that, and the pipes just come out into somebody's property.
Yeah, so that, that'll be ripped out.
You know, that area that's very, very steep, and that is a straight shot right down to the lake.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so that, that would be removed.
Even if it's coming from the road, that's a problem.
Oh, yeah. I'm saying, I'm not saying that's what it is, but I do know of different ones on Great East Lake that are that way.
So, what are, what is the board thinking?
My only concern is about all the excavation work. What's your thoughts on that, Ken?
Um, not properly, it shouldn't be that bad.
Yeah.
Ken, how would you do erosion control on a hill that steep?
Uh, right at the front of it, I would use, uh, mulch, probably. I mean, the only bad thing with mulch is picking it up. Um, silt fence may be the key on that one, but it just doesn't maintain very well.
Silt fence is tough.
Yeah.
So you're talking about stump grindings, Ken?
Yeah, hay bales you could use, cause it may be a little easier to pick up, but, uh, the intention would be on these smaller sites, dig it, get it off the site. Don't have stockpiles there. Um, as you're digging, you're not doing anything that way. You're gonna dig from the cut of the hill back into it, get rid of the deck first thing, dig, get it off the site. Um, then stabilize that front, that.
Is, is the foundation going under the whole house or they?
No, just the deck.
So they were gonna remove the deck and then put a new deck up?
Correct, they wanted to reuse the other one, but that made, to me, no sense.
That's what I couldn't figure out, you know, with the excavation, it's like.
Right, well, putting a new one on.
Are they gonna, they also wanna replace that, whatever that thing is around that old tree?
The suit of her.
What is that, Ken? You took a picture of it.
No, this is the applicant's pictures.
Oh.
Uh, no, that's gone. That's the beginning of the, it looked like a stairway system. The, the assessing photos are, you look at the stairway and it's like, oh my god, you'd never get to the lake if you lived there. Or if you're going to the lake, you're not gonna forget anything and go back.
Back up. Five minutes, guys. It's almost like a straight shot up.
Oh, definitely. That is the steep part.
Right, and we are on five-minute warning.
Ready to copy the motion.
Our videographer has given the warning. Alright. Alright, I will say, uh, we accept the.
No closer than forty-nine feet?
No closer than forty-nine feet. Uh, conditioned on extreme erosion control in place during construction.
Second.
We have a motion, any more discussion? All those in favor? Passes, thank you all very much.
Joyce?
Yes.
I do have one thing.
Yes, dear.
Three minutes.
We met at the workshop last week.
Yes.
We went over this sketch plan review.
Application.
Application, and I would like at our next meeting, um, that we would, uh, vote to. Accept this as a.
Implement.
As an implement, yep.
Uh, so that moving forward, uh, we'll have that in our process, okay?
Very good, yes.
Everybody can read it and look through it.
Sketch preliminary and final.
Yup.
Applications.
That, that. And we have the new one. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we wanna vote on the meeting thing, or the breaking it up or not breaking it up?
We'll talk about it again.
I think we're thinking.
I think, we're, we're at the thinking stage, and I'm thinking maybe we might wanna meet at six o'clock. Think about that.
Oh.
I know, I know.
I think it'd work better myself, but I make a motion to adjourn.
That's what we're thinking of. Motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all very, very much. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
Did I make it, Virginia?